Everybody in the room, the press are here and the meeting is being recorded. And thank you everybody for joining. We have over a hundred people registered tonight. And it shows how important this issue is for Ilkley. But let me just start off with a little, just a little story about our, about our, how we got here whilst we're waiting for all our colleagues to join. So I think some of you have been, were at previous meetings of the Ilkley Town River Group, Ilkley Cle River Group and the town meeting. Just wave if you've been at one before. We can see you there. Thank you. It's really great. And I think these meetings have made a really big difference to the campaign, both to hear what you want, but to also make sure that this is seen as and really is a town issue. It's not just me and Karen and Rick and Kathleen and Martin and Rhys whittling away on our own, that we've absolutely been working with a very large constituency of Ilkley who want our river cleaned up. And this is just the story really since 2018, which we started off, Kathleen started off many years before reporting incidents. Do you remember when we were showing pictures of those plumes of sewage going into the river? And then we found that the Environment Agency wasn't testing the river regularly. And so Rick set up the Citizen Science Programme and started testing the river for the things that the EA doesn't test, which is the stuff that's in our faeces, in our sewage. So E. coli and the stuff that makes people sick. And that, that I think was a quite a turning point for us because it demonstrated the level of pollution. And we're going to just remind ourselves about that as we go through this evening. Because obviously what we're looking for is a dramatic improvement in that. So knowing what the baseline is, is helpful when people are answering the questions about, so how is it going to be better? And what we found was that, do you remember the very first meeting when, when we were hearing from both the Environment Agency and Yorkshire Water that people know that sewage is going into the river all the time? Do you remember that? And so we were going, we didn't know actually. And then there was quite a conversation about there's not enough money, there isn't enough will, the public tolerates it. And really what we were doing, I suppose, over 2018, 19 was demonstrating not only the state of the river, but the public was incredibly shocked by the state of the river. And that our raw sewage was just going into the river every three days. It was a shocking, unreasonable Victorian era, not what we expect in the 21st century. We've, we undertook more testing. We met with the Environment Agency nationally, James Bevan. We showed the data. I remember sitting there with, at that time it was John Grogan. And he said, yes, you've proved your point. This is wrong. We have to do something about it. And I think that was the first tipping point. We started working around our kitchen table, that picture down there on the right, in those days when you could sit around kitchen tables. And we started trying to understand what the problems were. So the, the town has been both challenging, but also collaborative in our approach to cleaning up the river. And a couple of meetings ago, if you remember, one of the ideas was to, to generate or to go for bathing status, bathing status, we're going to explain a bit more in a minute, what that gets us. And, and, and so we have become the first river in the UK to achieve bathing status designation, which is a real significant shift in thinking and understanding. And at the same time, there's been a movement nationally around legislation. Task forces set up and I've asked Robbie to speak to that a little bit later on. So that's our, that's our, our starting point. We've spent nearly two years now, two and a bit years, trying to campaign for and secure a programme of activity that will clean the river up so that it's fit for humans and for wildlife, for both of us. Not just for people swimming, but for people paddling and playing and picnicking, but also for the wildlife that inhabits the river wharf. And that our sewage that we pay to be treated is treated. That's what the campaign's about. And so we have three objectives to the campaign. One was to stop Yorkshire Water pumping solids into the river. And there were some fairly early improvements on that with grills and cleanups, et cetera. And that includes the work they've been doing on the manholes. To stop the sewage discharge outside storm conditions, and you'll know that we think storm conditions in terms of the Urban Waste Water Treatment Directive, which is now UK law, is probably a handful of times, two or three times a year. And to upgrade our sewage system to cope with our population and climate change. So just to get us going, I thought it would be helpful to understand what our representatives think about how the river can, should improve in two, five and 10 years' time. I'm going to ask you to unmute in turn if you're here, but Robbie, would you want to fancy starting us off? So what do you, describe our river, just very quickly, two, five, 10 years.
Yeah, thanks Becky. Thank you for asking us to come along. Very quickly, what would I like to see the river? How would I like it to see over two, five and 10 years? I think now that we have the strategy in place of the bathing water space application, that sets almost the timeframe that has to, or gets the ball rolling, should I say. Now, we're all aware of the troubles and issues that we're having with the manhole covers bursting on the footpath, just as you, along the river wharf there. With most definitely, within the first five years, I'd be expecting to see a full upgrade of the works. As, you know, following on from conversations that I've already had with Yorkshire Water about that hardcore infrastructure work being done along Leeds Road. And I would certainly expect to see that funding put in place over the next five years in that time, if not sooner, ideally within two years. But I would certainly be holding Yorkshire Water to account in that timeframe. And also with much wider aspirations to do with cleaning up the river, ensuring that the sewage system that we have across the whole of Ilkley is fit for purpose. When we're looking at the future house building requirements that are going on in Ilkley, you know, there's 314 houses likely to be proposed in Ilkley. And that's, you know, but that's just Ilkley, 610 in Burleigh, 181 in Addingham. So over, over very quickly, I'd want to see interaction happening between the utility companies and the planning system as well, to make sure that the, the whole of the infrastructure system is fit for purpose, to ensure that we can get on top of this issue, Becky, that you've quite rightly highlighting. So that quick fire, quick fire.
That sounds great. And that's of course exactly what we're looking for Robbie and delighted that you can support that. I don't think, I can't see Martin Christmas here. Is there anybody else here from the Environment Agency that wants to unmute and ask that question, answer that question? Or Yorkshire Water? Okay. Okay. Well, let's move on. And I think one of the, if you've got questions, particular questions, I emailed those out to everybody that was here, that's, that's registered. So you've got your questions that you know we're answering. But if there are any questions that you, you've got on top of that, that you want to pop in the chat, then please do. And we're going to keep an eye on those over the course of the session. So do just post any questions that are right at the top of your agenda, if you haven't seen them already in the agenda for tonight. And I'm, I'm pausing here because without the agencies, we can't carry on. So I'm just going to wait for them to turn up now.
Becky, it's Dan Mason from Yorkshire Water. I'm sorry for interrupting. We're just having a bit of technical difficulties with Richard trying to get him into the meeting. So I'm just working away and trying to get him in. So once he's in, we'll be more than happy to contribute.
Great, thank you. Because he's up next. So that's perfect. Whilst you're here, Dan, since you're here, what's your response to the quickfire around? How do you think, what is your vision for the river in two, five, 10 years' time?
I'm just going to have to answer that. So I've just got Richard ringing me. So if you could just bear with me, hopefully we can get him in and he could take over.
Okay. No problem. Whilst, whilst Rich is joining us, I'm going to just remind us of the last town meeting and, and what was said. So do you remember Richard came to the meeting the 20th of February? And these were the words there on the, on our website, the recording of that meeting. And we were really delighted about this. Darf was not to investigate. Rivers are changing. We need to respond. Will to get it done. It's common sense. If you, if you give me a couple of weeks, I'll firm up our position. Oh, here comes Richard. And this statement after the event, so having positive discussions, surveys identify three underground water courses. If we can reduce the amount of surface water into the sewage network, that would mean the overflows will operate less frequently. So we, obviously, you know, a lot's happened this year and people have been stretched in all sorts of ways. But we called the meeting because it has been a year since we had these conversations. Bathing status awarded in, in the interim. But more importantly for us, I guess, is what's the plan? And so Steve, since Richard is here, do you want to just ask our first question of Richard? Because it falls in exactly with what he was wanting to share.
Yes. At the town meeting in February 2020, Yorkshire Water promised the town a plan for cleaning up the river. What is the, what is the plan over what timeframe, timeframe and how will it be achieved?
So Richard, you're in and on.
Right. My apologies for keeping you waiting there. There is a, that's a very simple question to which there is a long answer. And I'll answer it in full if I may. And first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the invitation to be here. That meeting you referred to back in February last year was actually the last public meeting I attended before the world changed and the end and the first lockdown. And I'm sincerely hoping that today will be the last virtual public meeting that I have to attend, as it's simply not the same as standing up and having a proper conversation with everybody in public. What I'm going to set out, if I can, is three things really. First of all, our proposed approach to improving the quality of the wharf throughout the catchment. This is the partnership that you've seen referred to in some of our, in our press release. I shall talk briefly about some of the early work which we'll undertake as part of the preparation for the first year of bathing water status. Now, that's obviously not just ourselves. That's also involves particularly Bradford Council and the Environment Agency, who'll be speaking later. And I'll also brief you on some of the shorter term measures which are being taken by ourselves, Bradford and the EA, to reduce the number of discharges within Bradford. That doesn't direct the impact on the bathing water status, but is nonetheless an improvement in river water quality. So let me start with the announcement of bathing water status back in that short period before last Christmas. It was pretty obvious to us for some months before that final announcement that the minister was only going to make a positive decision here. Clearly, the level of media coverage on river water quality issues and pressure for environmental NGOs, legitimate pressure on the impact of intermittent discharges meant that the politics all really pointed at one direction. So this was not a great surprise to us. And I suspect it wasn't to anybody. Now, there is an argument that says that actually bathing water status is not necessarily the best way to improve, deliver improved cleaner, improved ecological status and cleaner rivers. But there's no doubt that in this case it captured a mood which resonated with government and achieved its desired effect. So, but anticipating that decision made us step back and think through what was the best for the whole catchment, the whole river in the longer term. And what, certainly what we, we felt was that a more inspiring and ambitious target, rather than just looking at bathing waters, would be to achieve good ecological status for the whole river as set out in the Water Framework Directive by 2027. So although we're certainly committed to delivering what is required to achieve good bathing water quality for the town, focusing on the ecological status for the whole river benefits more people, is better for wild, better for nature and the environment, and is probably more sustainable. But because you're working on a bigger scale, it's also much harder to achieve. We're talking about a 65 mile long catchment here, which flows through a very mixed topography. And although clearly water company assets like our own have a big impact on the river, both in terms of what we put in and what we take out in terms of abstraction, agricultural land use, surface water runoff, industrial effluent and private discharges all have an impact. Likewise, you've got wares and physical barriers on the river which have a significant impact on the movement of migratory fish and other species. And we do have migratory fish in the wharf. There were some decently reported sightings last, last summer, I think, of salmon leaping the, the weir at Otley. But to deal with the complexity of that, we need to bring together a wide range of people to assess the state of the river, to understand the range of the impacts and to agree longer term, sustainable plans to address these. So what we decided was the, was a good solution was to form a partnership board to bring all the right people together. And we've had initial discussions with colleagues from the Environment Agency, Bradford Council, National Farmers Union, the Country Land Owners Association and the Yorkshire Dales Rivers Trust. We'll need to extend that conversation to talk to some of the bigger landowners upstream like Devonshire Estates. And we'll also need to ensure that the local community are widely involved. I think that local engagement is absolutely critical here. It will involve this group, but not just this group. There are other groups in Ilkley clearly, like the Civic Society and the Friends of the Riverside Parks that will need to also involve. But that dialogue will be very important. We'll also need to recognise that the wharf flows through more than one community. So that's, it's got to be catchment wide. So this is, this is a significant enterprise. The partnership will have an independent chair. And its early priorities in the, in its first year or so will be to model the catchment, understand how it works and to conduct what's called source apportionment work, which is understanding more about where pollutants come from on a river, which, 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 which damage its quality. So where does that lead? From a Yorkshire Water perspective, it leads to a point for our business plan for the five years from 2025 to 2030. And we want to make the achievement of an exemplar river wharf a key part of that, almost like an iconic project for that period. And although it's very early stages, we've asked our engineering consultants what it would take to eliminate all but the most intermittent discharges from our network, not just on the wharf, from everywhere on the network and how long that would take. I have no idea what the answers that will be. It'll be a formidable challenge. But nonetheless, if you don't know what the answer to it is, then where can you start? So it's an important question for us to ask. So you've got the partnership looking at the whole catchment. Then you'll have some subgroups which will need to deal with specific issues. The one which will get going quickest is the one that will deal with the bathing water status. And we'll be clearly setting that in the next few weeks. And we'll need to kind of look at the plans for what that means, not just for ourselves, but for the other parties. So I'll leave that to Bradford and the Environment Agency to talk about their bits of it in terms of sampling site management shortly. What my own colleagues internally already doing is starting to look at the modelling we'll need to do to give us the basis of the plans that we'll need to make for our assets. That's predominantly the assets upstream from, from Ilkley. So that's Addingham and above, which have a lot of impact on the river water quality in Ilkley. But we'll also need to look at, you know, the impacts of the river of what goes on in its tributaries. I think it's probably worth saying at this stage that catchment wide improvements and delivering good quality will take some time. This is not a small enterprise, but it's a very significant and a very important one. For the first few years on the bathing water quality side, the monitoring will show poor status and there is no immediate fix to that. It will fail the parameters. And we may as well be clear about that from the outset. The achievement of good bathing water quality will require substantial investment. I can't quote a precise figure on it here, but it is likely to be in the hundreds of millions. And that can't be conjured out of thin air. However, in the short term, there are some things that we can do to reduce the number of discharges from our sewer overflows in Ilkley itself. And we've said before at these meetings that we know that because of the nature of the, the way the network operates in Ilkley, there are a number of places where you get infiltration into the system predominantly from Ilkley town. And those are causing the system to overload and gives us more discharges. So working with Bradford and the Environment Agency, we think that the best option for the diversion of those flows is into Backstone Beck, which flows down through Ilkley and joins the wharf just downstream of the works. And we anticipate, according to our modelling, that that will reduce spill frequency by about 20%. The other things that we're looking at doing in the short term, well, certainly by the end of next year, we're looking to upgrade the screen on the Riverdale C S O and also widen the chamber, which will improve the aesthetics of the discharge and increase its capacity. And we're also working on another project to see what we can do to increase the size of the sewer network, to install new pipework to divert flows from Riverdale, which would again have significant reductions in the numbers of spills. I can't give you the, the figure on that at the minute because we're still modelling it. But it involved laying a new sewer down Leeds Road and diverting flows away from that particular C S O. The other thing that we're looking at is how we can pilot what's called a deployment of a smart network in Ilkley. This is something we've worked on elsewhere in, in Yorkshire. We already have telemetry and monitoring on the combined sewer overflows that tell us how many times those discharge. What we've, what we've done elsewhere and a pilot project which we've done with Siemens and the University of Sheffield, Sheffield is to put some additional monitoring throughout the network, link that up to the C S Os and use an artificial intelligence tool to kind of make us much more effective at predicting when blockages will occur and allowing us to intervene proactively rather than just waiting for reports from customers of, of problems and pollution incidents. That's had a significant impact where we've used it before. And we think that Ilkley is a good place to roll that pilot out for obvious reasons. Slightly longer term down the track, I think there's some opportunities there to, to do a few things. One, potentially to incorporate some citizen science modelling within that, some open source data, which would again add to the effectiveness of the tool. And it would also, I'd also look at to see how we could make the data from that monitoring available on a real time basis, which will give it some transparency. We don't have the tech to do that. You need an API to do that currently. But I think it's a good aspiration to go for here. So let me sort of finish. I'm sorry, I've talked for a little while, but there's quite a lot to cover really. There's a few kind of, two or three kind of questions that we need to bear in mind here. One is about costs. Although I'm sure that everyone would agree that Yorkshire's rivers need to be cleaner. And if we asked all our customers if they would agree with, with that aspiration, they would say yes. But the public who will end up paying for this through their bills also need to be clear that they are prepared to pay, to bear the cost. So for the wharf, I'd expect, as I said earlier, to be that in the region of hundreds of millions. For the Yorkshire, the figure will move to several billion. There's a process which our economic regulator expects us to go through to ascertain willingness to pay, which we would normally do as part of our business planning process. And that enables us to kind of scrutinise what customers say about this area investment to the same degree as any other. And so yet we don't know the answer to that modelling. It doesn't mean we're not going to make that case in a very strong way. We also need to understand a bit more about what the public expects of their rivers, how they want to use them in future. Bathing water might be welcomed by some of the population. And it might be appropriate for some areas, but not necessarily for all within the, within the catchment. Other customers may prefer to see some of the investment going in needed for tertiary treatment to go into the removal of wares and creation of fish passes. Finally, we need to see, to think about sustainability and kind of carbon impact. Tertiary treatment needed to remove bacteria from final effluent is very energy intensive. End of pipe solutions to remove nutrients and install new storage tanks are also carbon intensive. The nature based solutions that we've talked about before, the use of sustainable urban drainage systems are much more sustainable. But they are, they take longer and their outcomes are slightly less certain. But so ultimately we'll end up with a blend of solutions. But I don't think the nature based sustainable approaches will give you everything that we want. So we will need to blend the two together. So in conclusion, I've tried to give a lengthy but honest picture of what we're setting out to achieve here and to demonstrate some of the kind of complexity of this. Solutions aren't easy or quick. But if anyone's of the, you know, of the opinion that I'm saying this is a delaying tactic or as an excuse, then, you know, that, that's not true. They are wrong. And I'll finish by being absolutely clear on our commitment to two things. And we will work with others to achieve good ecological status by 2027. And are equally committed to delivering bathing water quality, which over time consistently needs a good standard here in Ilkley. So forgive me for having spoken at some length. But we had a lot to cover and it's a while since I've spoken. So I hope that's helpful and gives an answer to not just to the initial question, but some of the others that I know colleagues have, have raised.
Thank you, Richard. That is phenomenally helpful and really optimistic. I think we've, I think we feel like we've turned a corner from a couple of years ago to an approach now where there's a recognition both that the river needs cleaning up and that there are some, you know, whilst it's complex and sometimes complicated and sometimes complex, there are some solutions emerging, which is, which is fantastic. We're obviously very interested in time scales and what this really means. And so I know in your press release, you talked about 20% reduction in storm overflows. And that was based on some modelling. And you'll remember the, the data that you gave us about, you know, 114 days in 2019. So 20% reduction if it was days, I don't know whether it's days or spills, actually does sort of get us still just below 90. And yet you're, you have an ambition for bathing status. So Karen, I think you have a question for Richard. You just seem to unmute yourself to do that.
And what level of storm overflow discharges are you aiming for?
Some reason I've muted myself. Apologies Karen. Ultimately, I'd like to aim for zeros intermittent discharges. I mean, that's where anyone would like to be. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean I can achieve that within a short period of time. I think what we'll see is, you know, progressively we will do things that will reduce the number of discharges that we make. And what we'll also be able to do is, is do things that reduce the, if you like, the, the, the volume that's also coming out as well. I can't give you a time scale on the infiltration diversion and, and when we will see an impact from that. But I would imagine we'll know the answer to that quite quickly. Again, I can't say precisely and I'm not going to give a hostage to fortune by committing something I can't deliver. But I would imagine that will work relatively quickly because you're immediately taking, you know, quite substantial flows out of the system. The sewer diversion work will also deliver a pretty material reduction in spills in Ilkley. But, you know, when you're laying a new network around the public highway, then clearly that takes some, some planning time as well as investment time as well. So I don't mean to be evasive Karen, you know, we would like to get zero spills. There is no question of that. But it will take us a bit of time to do that.
I think that leads us very, very neatly into the next question, Richard. Sorry, these are all for you.
I'm not entirely surprised, Becky.
You're making the most of having you here. So Martin, if you could just unmute for this one.
Yes, the numbers attending this meeting is a testament to the interest that this has got locally. And I was wondering, how is the Yorkshire Water Bradford Council partnership going to involve local residents in the planning and, and the planning of the sewage system and preparing the bathing water status?
Well, I think you raise a really important question. There's two aspects to that that I'd like to answer. I mean, first of all, for the last 12 months, engaging the public directly has been extraordinarily difficult because of the situation that we're in. Ideally, we'd have been having regular face to face public meetings over the last 12 months and developing a proper dialogue. But, you know, this may be a decent substitute, but it's not an adequate substitute. So once this situation lifts, then we can do a lot more kind of face to face engagement. What we normally do within a bathing water partnership is, is kind of have a subgroup that brings together representatives of all the local groups to work with us within that structure, so that we've got regular dialogue going with the organised groups. But we also need to make sure we're talking to people who are not part of organised groups. And we do have to recognise that there is a multiplicity of opinion on this subject within the town. And it's important that we respect and incorporate that in the plans as well. So I'll give you a complete commitment that we will be engaging the local community in its entirety as soon as we possibly can. It's the central to the way in which we work on our bathing water partnerships at the coast. And the person who organises those will be transferring his skills to this enterprise and he's very good at it.
I think the, I've just watched some responses in the chats and some things that are coming to me privately, Richard. And two things that are coming through at the moment. One is that whilst it might not be easy to engage the public via virtual means, masses of services and agencies are doing it and having to do it. So. So saying that we just have to wait till we can make face to face seems unreasonable because that will certainly be after May. So I think there's, there's a concern about that, that you've got a very active population here. And you may say we're a section of, but I think you'll find that the town meetings is quite diverse views. So these, there's a number of people that are really interested in the future. I think that's the first thing to say. And the second thing is that the other comments that's just coming through are about, gosh, this feels like a long way off. And if you remember last year in February, we, we talked to you about if we went through the storm overflow assessment plan, which would take us to 2030, it's beginning to feel like it's going to take us to 2030, Richard. So, you know, I think, is there any sense of, we asked people about five years and five years, we felt, we've always talked about five years as being something we feel like that. You know, we'd understand if it took two to five years, but taking 30 years seems, seems really, really a long way out or a long way off people's expectations.
Well, I don't think I've ever said it will take 30 years.
Do you remember the soft though, the EA would say it was going to take us a few?
I didn't know. No one ever said it would take 30 years. So let's be straightforward about what we have or what we haven't said here. And I'm very, very careful. I would rather talk to you about a longer time scale and then be able to accelerate that than do it the other way around. Because I'm not going to promise something that we cannot deliver. In actual fact, this has already been accelerated more than would normally be the case. And you'll clearly know the reasons for that. You know, we are probably five years ahead of where we might have been otherwise in terms of we've done the investigations into the network. We've already identified and brought forward schemes that probably wouldn't have happened till after 2025 into this period. So we are moving at certainly what for capital investment is quite a fast pace here. It may not seem fast paced or fast enough to you. That's the job of people like yourselves to put pressure on us to move faster. I accept that, but it doesn't mean that we can always conjure a, you know, capital investment out of thin air. We will move as quickly as we can, but I would rather under promise and over deliver than do it the other way around.
So I guess the next thing, Richard, is a process by which we can find out as a town, I guess is the next piece. So as these things develop, we often hear sort of a lot later, you know, we apply for bathing status. We heard on the day of bathing state, well, we heard fire ITV ringing us up, to be honest. I know that wasn't, that wasn't your decision, it was DEFRA, but we're often the last to hear. And so it would be, I think the town would really like to be a little earlier sighted on developments as they happen.
That's a fair request. I mean, I remember seeing the DEFRA email to you, which I think came out before the announcement was made. Well, the one I saw that came out to you did come out before, so there we go. But it certainly came out to, to ourselves probably about the same time actually. But yes, certainly, I think from conversations with ourselves and the Environment Agency in particular, we reckon that, we recognise that there is a thirst for people to know what is going to happen and to see a kind of constant flow of news about that. And it's in both our interests to deliver that as best we can.
Lovely. Thanks so much, Richard. Thanks for all that honesty. It's really, really helpful. I'm going to move on to the next sort of part of the, the set of the, the talk tonight, which is around bathing status. And we know this has exercised the town. As you know, for those of you that hear that this was the, when DEFRA ran the consultation for this, it's never had so many responses to a consultation. And the, and the numbers of people in favour were over the 90%. It was absolutely amazing. And it was the same when we ran our town survey. And of course we were seeking designation in order to secure testing and the clean up of the river. So this is the stretch that we, we applied for from the main bridge, right the way down to Beanlands Island. And just want to be absolutely clear with everybody, what day, what designation is and how it helps. So basically you're demonstrating that the great British public on a sunny day packs its picnic, heads off, paddles, plays and swims in rivers across the country and are, and in Ilkley, they do the same. Some days it's extraordinary volumes of people, but on the whole, we're talking about hundreds. So when we applied, the application is based on the fact that people are already using the river. It's not a tractor or a detractor. It's a recognition that people are using the river and therefore they need information about the quality of the water that their kids are paddling and playing in. And it triggers, it triggers the following. So it triggers testing, regular testing on water quality. It triggers potentially investment to clean up the river in Ilkley. We, we think, I know, Richard, you, you'll probably want to comment on this, but the investment is because obviously if we persistently put up in Ilkley that the river quality is poor, then persistently, that's going to be very bad news for all of the agencies and the town. So it's in everybody's interest that the river's cleaned up. The signage about water quality and risk to bathing happens during bathing season. There needs to be some management plan for the river, i.e. for how people use the river. But there isn't any real requirement to provide facilities apart from signage, which is responsibility of the town council. Now, when you see that classification on the right, I think it's really worth noting the, the bottom right hand side. Can you see that where it says poor bathing? And what we're expecting is that we're expecting for the first year or two that we will be having signage saying that the bathing quality is poor. Now, the second thing to note about the, about the, about the designation and the signage is that the testing of the river is taking place just upstream of the Iron Foot Bridge. So where most tourists usually go, but we, as you know, applied for that space further down. We applied for the longer stretch of the river because we're concerned about local people and a local people's usage. And so if you look at the sampling point, the sampling point is just there above the suspension bridge. We've asked for sampling all the way down. The response is, but because this is our count at Beanlands during our bathing, our bathing application. That's a, that's a picture of people paddling and playing at Beanlands area. And that's where we know there is significant raw sewage discharge. And just to remind yourselves of the figures in low flow. If you remember that bathing status says that sort of, what's reasonable for bathing or for people to be in the river paddling and playing is 900 CFUs per 100 mls. And you can see upstream of the Iron Foot Bridge and just a little bit below it in low, in low flow. I, it hasn't rained. There is no storm overflow running, but that's perfectly reasonable for people. It, it looks safe. Where you can see Beanlands Island there with the red ring and down to the, and down to the bridge. That's the area where the sewage plant discharges sewage and treated sewage. And that's way in above, that's for me is a public health disaster as a health professional. But in rainy days and in high flows, it's always way above the 900, way above what's safe for people to paddle, play and swim. And so our, so what we know is that bathing status will give us the regular testing, what will show the water quality is poor and trigger a clean up. So we're not expecting in the summer, in May, for a sign to go up saying, this is a designated bathing area, the water court is fabulous, all come and join us and swim in it. Because the point of us getting this was to trigger a clean up. And so our next issue is that whilst the signage is going to be in this area where the testing is, it, it will say poor, but we know it's not at all, not just poor. It's lethal further down the river. It's really, really a danger to people's public health. And so we understand from the Environment Agency, Martin, you can comment maybe in a minute. The reason why you're not testing below the footbridge is because you know the level of E coli is so high that it would never meet bathing status as it stands. And we've always been asking for signage like this for below the Iron Foot Bridge. We think some of the public needs to know that as they're taking their picnics down there or our local children are going down there, that raw sewage poses a health risk to people and animals. And that from this point, the river is not suitable for bathing in any shape or form. Maybe those aren't the exact words that you would choose. But we have a question and the first question here is from Isla. And it's just on the Beanlands Island signage piece, Isla, do you want to do that one?
Yeah, we, we'd like to know what's going to happen about signage for the, that stretch from the Iron Bridge to Beanlands. Particularly because it's an area that a lot of the local people use, but also because we've heard a lot about the Iron Bridge end. But obviously there's a public footpath that runs all the way along there. And there's access from the other, other end to where the public footpath goes down to the stepping stones by the Texco garage. So we'd like to know about the plans for that area.
Richard, would you be able to comment? Because it's your land.
I'm not sure it is actually, but I'm still checking that. So I, I think that's more of a question for Bradford than ourselves.
So we've been round this, Mark will know this, I don't know whether you want to come in, Mark Stivworthy, but we've been round this a few times.
Yeah, can I just come in briefly? I mean, people may assume that it might be the responsibility of the town council to put signage. But we're very reluctant to do that because we're not the manager of the water. We're not the owner of the land, nor are we the manager of the park. And we feel that we did not, we shouldn't be taking responsibility for something that isn't ours. So as a very last resort, we would consider putting up signage if somebody else paid for it and acknowledged that it was not the responsibility of the town council to deal with the problem. But generally, we would much prefer that the people responsible for managing the river, which we consider to be Bradford Council and Yorkshire Water, put up signage of this nature.
So we have a map sent by Paul from the comms team at Yorkshire Water that demonstrated that Yorkshire Water own the land below the footbridge. So the issue is, does Bradford Council put up a sign just before Yorkshire Water's land at the footbridge to say from here on? Or does Yorkshire Water do it? And I think we've just been round this a few times now. I don't know whether Jonathan or Sue, you want to hop in and say?
Yeah, sure. Yes, we, we, we spoke to Yorkshire Water. Is Martin Christmas here or?
Yes, he's here now.
Hi Jonathan, yeah. Jonathan and I have had this conversation. And it's definitely the beach manager Bradford's responsibility to put the signs up. And you're right, Becky, I sent you that email saying what my suggestion was because we have, we have some known bacterial levels and we have some less well known. So, yeah, Jonathan and I have had a conversation around what, what sign is most, is most appropriate. And that is largely driven to protect public health. Given, given the amount of data that we've got at the moment and what we, what we know and what we can assume.
So what's the answer, Martin? Is there going to be a sign up below the footbridge this year to warn people about the pollution for their children?
We'd, we'd be happy to put that signage there. We'll be guided by the EA in, in terms of, you know, what it says. But we'd, we'd be happy to, to have signage there. If, if it is Yorkshire Water land, then obviously we'd seek their permission to, to put the sign on it.
Because I think we need it both ends, as Isla says, we need it as people come in from the roadside and where people come in from the footbridge side. So thank you. That's really helpful. Glad to hear that. We'll look forward to seeing those by May when, when people start using the river. That's, that's great to know. Thanks so much.
And, and also we, we wouldn't expect the town council to, to do that. You know, we, we recognise that signage is a responsibility of Bradford Council.
And the, the second issue I suppose is that whilst we're getting the long term plan, do we think that it will ever be safe for anybody to paddle, play and swim down in this area, which is recreationally used by the public, the local public, these folks that stretch down here? Martin, do you think it'll ever be okay for us to paddle, play and swim down there?
I think there would need to be some significant investment similar to what happens at the coastal works, which involve usually ultraviolet contamination on the final effluent. But as, as I said in the email team, we know at the moment that we can, you know, we can fairly confidently say it would be sound advice, tell people that that's not, that's a higher risk area compared to, compared to upstream. But because of the fact that we haven't completed a year's sampling, and to put it into context, we'll be taking 20 samples from May to September. And to get a pass, you need 90%. So 18 of those 20 samples need to be under that 900 quality forming units threshold. So given, given what we've seen so far with the fantastic work that the citizen science group have done. You know, we've got a, got only a handful of samples, but it's going to be tough. So I think that the signage is likely to say, and we'll still have to agree this with Jonathan, exactly what the wording will be, but I think it will be advice against bathing for 2021.
And I think, I think it's just this being clear, I guess, between those areas that are very significantly polluted, which is below the Iron Foot Bridge and is a real risk to public health. I think if we know that data, we've had that data for some time, then, and we keep sharing it in the press. But the reality is, I think we all have a duty of care to the public around that.
Yeah, and it's interesting. I mean, Jonathan and I have discussed that there is already a sign up saying bathing prohibited just by the, just by the Iron Bridge and it's been there for some years. So we need to be mindful that there is signage and there is adherence to signage as a.
We, as you know, we're asking that the public has informed choice. And so when we go down with our leaflets down to Beanlands and talk to visitors and say, do you know what? This is really, really unsafe here. They think we're being NIMBY. So at least if there is some official signage, we can at least refer them to that and say, just so you know, we know the water here is polluted to the level of your children.
Totally agree. And I think, I think let's not just stick with signs. Let's kind of help, help the public with social media. I was going to talk a bit about our citizen space where, you know, you spoke to Richard around how are we going to, you know, keep people informed. But we're setting up a, a citizen space web portal. And the commitment that I will give you is that as soon as there's any information that we have to share, we will put it on the citizen space portal for you to find.
That's great.
In that spirit of open and transparent working that government's committed to.
That's wonderful. Thanks very much, Martin. It's good to hear that. I know, Rick, you've joined us now and I just want you to talk a little bit about some of these upstream sources. So Rick, if you could unmute yourself and I'll move you through the slides as you want me to.
Okay, thanks Becky. I'm sorry for being late. Just, just in time by the looks of it. Yeah, so we have obviously a concern about E coli downstream from Ashlands and continuous high concentration from the final effluent. But the main bathing area is upstream. And so the sources of faecal bacteria upstream are coming, we think from Addingham in high flow, from the pumping station and from tributaries upstream. So this is just the data from 29th of October last year. It shows on the right hand side, those really high numbers. The blue is E coli, the, the red numbers are intestinal intra-cockae. And you can see in the main river to the top left of the corner there, to the Addingham Lowir site, just 300 E coli, 400 IE. So pretty low concentrations and reasonably safe for swimming there. But then you come down to that yellow box where it says 780,000 E coli. And that's the concentration in the mill stream. And that's when the adding and pumping station is actually discharging in there. And it goes from the mill stream then into the wharf, causing those increase from the 300 to the 2,800 and coming down to Ilkley. So that's the one source of E coli or faecal bacteria that needs to be controlled if there's going to be a move towards gaining bathing status. And the next slide, Becky. And then we've, there's also this question about the extent to which faecal bacteria come from the agricultural environment, from, from farmland, from livestock and from, from, from septic tanks. And you can see from these, this map and these data, again, the red is the main river. The yellow are the various tributaries upstream. And you'll see they're really quite high numbers in the Addingham Bex, 2,800, 3,000, 4,000. Up at Hamilton Beck, the top left there, 1,900. So these are village sources, farm sources and septic tank sources, mixed sources coming into the river. The river is actually so large in relation to these tributaries that it really dilutes out those, those concentrations in the Bex. But again, there's probably enough coming in from those tributaries to, to cause the concentrations down in Ilkley at the main bathing site to be higher than they, they should be. So the question is next slide. Becky, those are the two statements there about the Addingham Pumping Station and about the importance of the agricultural area upstream. So the, I guess the question is to Martin and to, to, to Richard or to Environment Agent of the Yorkshire Water, what are the plans to, to monitor these sources and then to manage them?
Martin, do you want to start?
Okay, yeah, sure. So firstly, I guess we'll be doing the bathing water sampling. As I said, that's 20 samples made to September. That's to provide the. As I said, that's 20 samples made to September. That's to provide the classification. So within that, we're going to include some EDNA monitoring, what we call multi-source tracking. So for that sampling point at the Cromwell, we'll be able to find down to four sources really, so ruminants, birds, dogs and people in terms of, in terms of the contribution. So that's the, that's something we will do for classification. We've also got in place a number of investigative activities. So you'll always hear when organisations talk about money and we are waiting for what our budget allocation and the spending review 20 from DEFRA to the Environment Agency means for our, our monitoring programme. But we're intending a walkover programme, following some of the advice that Rick has given us over the, over the previous months. And we are fingers crossed, hoping for six officers to focus on farm assurance for Wharfdale. This is kind of money dependent, obviously, but this is to look at what we call storage of, of slurry and the farming rules for water legislation that came in some years back. That the legislation came in, but didn't come in with any additional funding and DEFRA have recognised that. And that's, so with the EDNA multi-source tracking and with the investigations and the additional farm assurance work, we should be able to bottom out what we call a source apportionment between sewage works that we can see and the pumping stations, CSOs, and also the background contribution of faecal, of faecal organisms from, from the catchment. And from that, we will be able to start to base some ethical plans in terms of how we're going to rectify that and reduce it.
Richard, have you anything to add to that?
A couple of things briefly. I mean, clearly we know that there's an issue around storage at Addingham, which we need to focus on. I think the critical piece of work is the source apportionment activity that we'll need to do alongside Mark, the Environment Agency. And I think it's quite important that we join up quite a lot of the, the, the research and investigations that are going on here, such that we've got a comprehensive single version of the truth here. And we'd like to link that into Rick's programme for extending the citizen science work in the next 12 months. Seems to make sense to us to have, have one programme of investigation rather than three, so we can really pin down and get a thorough picture of where everything is coming from. Then we can direct investment properly.
So I'm going, so I'm going, Rick.
I was just thinking, just, just quickly, one, one, one thing that, just following up on that in terms of joined up thinking, it will be important to, to talk with Martin and, and Rich because we've already got this proposal to work with the University of Sheffield again on DNA of bacteria in the Addingham and Ilkley area. So if, if Martin, you're intending to do some MST as well, I'm not sure whether that's joined up thinking or not, but it's something that we perhaps can talk about offline.
Yeah, more samples than merrier, I think, in terms of, of MST, just to get the variability nailed properly.
So we've, so we've got, what we're seeing now is a pattern of work to be done across the whole of, both the wharf as a whole, but Ilkley and, and the sources upstream of Ilkley. Whilst we know sewage is the major polluter, there's all these other areas too. And then we've got a, we've heard a proposal about the bathing status this year. We know we're going to get a sense that the river's poor for a while as we're planning to do this. And that's going to need some active management because obviously people think we've got bathing status. That means the river gets cleaned up. That means it's great for kids to paddle, play and swim in. And so I think there's some work to be done this year, whether it's part of your subgroup, Richard, or just some common sense prevailing about how do we handle this with the public, given that this is a process to clean up the river, rather than an immediate, the river's clean, get in there, swallow as much as you like and you'll, you'll be fine. So the notion both of the risk people take, but also that we're on a trajectory. Because I think getting the first designated bathing river and then say, don't swim in it no matter what you do, isn't going to go down great with people nationally or locally. I can't imagine our, Robbie's minister will be entirely pleased with that as a message when she just opens it as the first designated area. So I think it's the, it's the, it's the difficulty of it being called a bathing status in that we have to do it based on people using it. But at the same time, it, it assumes therefore we have a lovely place for people to swim, rather than, it will be a lovely place for people to swim. It is beautiful. It's wonderful to swim there when the conditions are right and when you're not getting, you know, certainly not after rainfall. And it will be great over time, but we need to handle that somehow. And so let's just move on to the, to the next piece of our, of today. And this is really, Robbie, a little bit more focused at you now. And maybe, maybe Martin, Richard, you'll know more about the Storm Overflow Task Force as well. I've just been talking to OFWAT today. So the Storm Overflow Task Force was convened in August 2020. OFWAT convened, no, DEFRA convened it to try and reduce the frequency of volume of sewage discharges from all overflows across the country. And in January, they, they sent, sent out a rather insipid press release about what they're doing, which is basically measuring stuff, which we found a bit disappointing. But I'm pleased to hear via colleagues at OFWAT that, and you may be able to illuminate us a bit more, that the next couple of months are the growth of prioritisation process and the solution finding process, and that those will be published reasonably quickly. So there will be a plan nationally to clean up rivers. So the Storm Overflow Task Force is not just measuring, but it is actually moving into, to action. Robbie, you may know a bit more about that too. But also that we have this private members bill. Now, we were somewhat intrigued by this because obviously with us leaving the European Union, European law becomes part of the UK's legislation and that would include the Urban Wastewater Treatment Directive, which says that you only spill in times of extreme weather conditions. And in 2012, when we were examined as the UK in terms of our response to this, we were found to be in breach because it should really be only in storm conditions, i.e. when we're at a level of flood. Now, the process that we've been describing today is demonstrating that we're well in, you know, we're moving way into the right direction to clean up our, to clean up our sewage system. But I also heard, Robbie, that the legislation as it stands isn't strong enough. So our question to you, Robbie, is how is the national legislation going to secure us a storm overflows in Ilkley at the level of, we think, two to three times a year? So Robbie, if, do you have a view about that?
Yeah. And thank you, Becky. And I might also just use this opportunity to talk, a comment on a few of the, of the other points that's been discussed tonight as well, if, if I may, if that's okay. I know you very kindly started off by saying it initially started as a town issue, this. But actually, it's a, it's a complete national issue, cleaning up the rivers. And I just wanted to touch on the, the actual status that we've achieved of bathing water status. Because I've been having many conversations with Rebecca Powell, who's the Environment Minister, around, around it, the, the structure of bathing water status. And I, I think we actually have to look at what the ambition is that we're all trying to achieve. And it's very much clean water status that we're trying to achieve to ensure that then if people do wish to bathe, they've got the opportunity to do that, but also for, for purposes of cleaning up the ecology, the water quality, et cetera, of the river. And obviously, this is the first bathing water status that we've achieved, that has been achieved on freshwater, you know, in England, which is a remarkable achievement. But I do think my concerns are actually around the branding of it being called bathing water status. Because there'll be many, there'll be many individuals that don't, don't necessarily know what bathing water status means. And there will be a general assumption that it is safe to swim, which of course, isn't really what bathing water status is about. And I've actually been having conversations with, with the minister about actually that the whole bathing water status should be rebranded, almost whatever it is. But it's more about clean water status and that ambition to deliver that. And of course, what we don't want to see, and I know you've picked up on it on many of the questions that have been raised tonight about actually signage, safety issues, et cetera, et cetera, and management of it. You know, and actually a lot of the focus needs to be driven around that now, so that everyone is fully aware that just because it's bathing water status that's been allocated, that it's not quite at that, that, that status yet, and it's not simply saying it's safe to swim. The other things I just wanted to move on to were you, 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 you mentioned the environment bill there and you also mentioned the, the private members bill, which is being progressed by one of my colleagues, Philip Dunn, who's the MP for Ludlow. So I just thought I'd use this opportunity to touch on both of those as well as the task force, if that's okay. So the environment bill is working its way through the House at the moment. It will come back to the House of Commons for its third reading after the Queen's speech, which is envisaged in May time. But there's two clauses in there which are pretty significant. First clause being clause 76, which is to do with drainage and sewage management. And that basically says that sewage undertakers, so i.e. Yorkshire Water, will be required to produce a statutory drainage and sewage management plan to actively address environmental risks such as sewage overflows and the impact on water quality. And the bill also will make drainage and sewage management planning a statutory duty. And this will mean that it is a duty for water companies to examine and investigate the capacity of their networks. Now, of course, this is obviously national legislate, or national legislation. And we, with having the bathing water status, there's more onus being put on utility companies to, or Yorkshire Water to, to go further than this. But this, this clause aims nationally, which is our, which we're all wanting to try and get increased water quality to allow for more assessment of drainage and water, wastewater issues, long-term planning on environmental impact, improved resilience to extreme weather conditions, which we know that's one of the things that mainly has an impact here in Ilkley. It's one of the factors, as has already been mentioned, and less risk of sewer and surface water flooding. And there's a second clause in the environment bill, which is also worth noting, which is about water industry regulation. I think it's clause 77, 280 or 79. And that is about modernising the process of modifying water and sewage companies licensing conditions. And I think that's really important that we, we, we have that built into UK legislation. And the bill will aim to reduce the divergence between individual companies' licence conditions and regulatory uncertainty for the whole industry. So that, and that, what also that, what that does, it strengthens OFWAT's ability to improve the way water companies operate and improve information OFWAT receives on water companies' operations under the Water Industry Regulation, Legislation. And the other thing, of course, that the, the environment bill does is it also sets up the, the Office of Environmental Protection, which is, which is really key. Because that, what that office does is hold the regulatory bodies to account as well. So also it will hold the Environment Agency to account in making sure that as a regulatory body, the Environment Agency is also doing as they should. And they'll be held to account by the Office of Environmental Protection. And so there's some good stuff that's included within the environment bill. And obviously, it's not an act yet, but it's working its way through the House and should be, should be coming into proper legislation this year. The other bill that you did mention there kindly, Becky, was the Sewage Inland Waters Bill, which I, I'm quite excited about and I've, as you know, put my full weight behind that bill. Just for those of you on the call that maybe don't know, it is a private members bill. So it's a bill that's been progressed by an individual MP, Philip Dunn. And really, the, the nuts and bolts of this piece of legislation is that it, it places a statutory duty or will place a statutory duty on water companies to ensure that untreated sewage is not discharged into rivers or other inland waters. And really, that's what we're, you know, this is what the whole process is about, that, that, that you as a campaign group have been involved with. And I have made it very public that I support Philip Dunn and his aspirations and that private members bill. It's unfortunate that it hasn't, in terms of timing, it was due to be heard. It's all, I think it's been delayed now for the third time. And let me just touch on that. Private members bills always happen on a Friday. And unfortunately, over the last, because of COVID, private members bills have been put on hold simply because of the COVID restrictions and, but the private members bills are now sitting again, as from this Friday. Now, the government have stated its intention and aspiration to support elements of the bill. And I will be continuing to work with Philip Dunn and other colleagues cross-party to try and put more weight in influencing the government to actually adopt the bill in its entirety. And if not, at least take across some of those clauses or the main pieces of the clauses from that bill and encompass it within the environment bill. Now, the, the final thing was the task force that you wanted me to come on, comment on as well. So now, as you quite rightly say, the task force was made up with representatives from DEFRA, the Environment Agency, OFWAT and water companies director, water company directors. And this is a collective agreement really, which sets out a long-term goal to end pollution from storm overflows. And it's also, the, the, the whole aspiration with it being driven by DEFRA is to increase transparency and put an onerous on water companies to make sure that real-time data is made available to the public on water discharges that are happening, so that there shouldn't be any issues with people finding out about data being made available, you know, it should be, should be there in the public domain. And water companies, it also states that water companies are also accelerating work to install monitoring devices, which will create a complete picture of their activity by 2023. But it's okay doing all of the monitoring. It's okay making sure that the data is available. You know, what we very much want to see is that whilst we create task forces, it actually delivers something. And, and in order to deliver things, you also obviously need to have funding that goes alongside that. And it's my understanding to date that water companies have committed 1.2 billion to improvements in managing storm overflows, including event duration monitoring. And also as part of the, the government's 25-year environmental plan, that is all, contains aspirations to do of reducing leakage from, from the sewage network as well. Now, what I want to, you know, what I very much want to try and see as an, as an individual MP, working with colleagues down in Westminster, is that whilst a task force is set up, it's got teeth, it's got weight, and we actually see some actions being delivered from that. And I, you know, if we're taking Ilkley as a, as a, as a case that we're all highly ingrained into looking at, you know, we've openly had discussions and I've met with residents along River View, you know, where we've got the sewage entering, the manhole covers, et cetera. And I know Richard commented on it, on it earlier. But, you know, what I would very much like to see is that let's get that plan in place. Let's look at what needs to be done in terms of runoff from the Tarn, et cetera. What needs to be done along Leeds Road to get that hard infrastructure put in place so that we can start getting some movement on this now and get a plan in place now alongside timings and so that we can sort of have a place, plan in place now, so that we can start delivering on some of these improvements. So I, oh, and the final thing, the final thing I did want to pick up on, I hope, sorry, I apologise. I'm, there's so much to talk about, was just some of the things that Rick picked up on. Because a lot of this is to do with upstream as well. And I sit on the Environment, Food and Rural Affairs Select Committee. And with my background of being a rural surveyor, I got involved prior to being a MP with a lot of the pilots, test and trial schemes to do with the Elms, the environment land management schemes. And I think a lot of that will be very important upstream in terms of improving water quality from agricultural runoff. So, and I know that DEFRA are very much progressing some of the pilot schemes now for Elms. And finally, I'd be very keen to get Rebecca Powell up to Ilkley so that she can probably come and meet with the group as well in person. So that would be good to do.
Thanks, Robbie. And I think just, just to be clear on behalf of the town, which is, we're delighted that everybody wants this to be their issue now and they want to take full responsibility for it. But this issue would not have happened without the town coming together to make it very visible nationally. So I think I'm, have been, I suppose, over the years, particularly the last two years on this campaign, concerned about how the public is always seen to be at the bottom of the tree, rather than the top of the tree. And that actually, it's us that pays for all of this. We pay our bills to have our sewage treated. We pay our taxes so that people like you can earn a salary. So I think there is something for me about the accountability lies to us and we mustn't forget that. And it was, it was local people walking along the river, reporting incidents that started all this off. And we mustn't forget the effort those people made and the time and love they've given up to do that on behalf of us all. So I just don't want to.
Yeah, I know, and I don't disagree at all. I'm not, and that's not what I'm saying at all. I I think that as a campaign group, and that's why I mentioned the campaign group a few times already in the chamber. Crikey, and you'll know that because I've sent you a copy of the Hans I report, you know, of the good work that you've been doing. But I what I'm meaning is actually, you have driven this by it being the first place in the UK to get bathing water status designation. I think there's a few issues, as I said, to do with the branding of it, but bathing water, just because of some of the added complications it brings. But in terms of achieving clean water status, that's been driven actually by Ilkley, has now become a national issue that we want to all be pushing forward for every inland water, freshwater stream basis. So, I mean, yeah, it's very much at the heart of Ilkley that's been at the driving force.
So good, thanks, Robbie, and thanks for your support. And we're glad that you'll be able to invite Rebecca. And we understand that Emma Howard Boyd, Howard Boyd, look at those wrong way arounds, is coming up to meet our lovely Karen at some point because of their tete a tay on Women's Hour some recent weeks ago. If anybody missed it, well worth a listen. So let's just, there's a couple of issues. I know we've got Alex here, which is really great. Thank you, Alex, for coming from Bradford Council. There are there are sort of two issues that to be just addressed, Alex, before we get into our breakouts and a response from Mark and our breakouts and a little bit of info about the I Worf. But Alex, if you if you wouldn't mind just unmuting yourself to answer these two questions. Reece, you had a question about housing, and we also have a question about the water safety strategy, Alex, which is that we understand that as the owner of and of the of the riverside and the area around this, that there is a responsibility, you might call it anti drowning or water safety. And whilst we're very, very wedded to cleaning up the river, we also want it to be a safe place for people. So just to comment on that, and Reece, sorry, if you'd unmute yourself and ask your question about housing.
Yeah, hi. Look, it's been very interesting conversation so far, so thank you. This question really is about the impact of population growth and the impact of that on the state of the water quality. Particularly concerned with all the promised new houses in the area. And Robbie has suggested that this could be as many as twelve hundred and thirty one, if you include Addingham with a hundred and eighty one, Ilkley three hundred and forty, and Burley at six hundred and ten. And how that might impact the the quality of the water, especially with the length of time some of these major infrastructure works might take to get in place. So I suppose we'd like to be assured that the quality isn't going to get worse before it gets better.
Over to you, Alex.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Becky. Good to see you and put a face to the name and just whizzing through and seeing a few of the familiar faces as well. So good to see everyone and apologies for lateness. Tardily didn't register on the Eventbrite and then links weren't working. And poor old Jonathan, our council officer, was desperately trying to sort that out. And then I've logged on under his name and all sorts, but I'm here now. So good to see you all. And I guess firstly, just congratulations to the Ilkley Clean River Group on getting this sparked, a great achievement. We're really pleased to support the group in seeking that status and look forward to working with everyone over the years ahead, really, you know, to achieve that vision of a clean and safe river that people can enjoy and is a real asset to Ilkley and the wider Worf Valley. I'm not sure what Jonathan will have said so far already on bits and pieces. So apologies if they're over or if he's stayed quiet and he's managed to avoid it so far. But I'll defer to him on some of the bits. From a council's perspective, just slightly more broadly, in in terms of this, we've kind of got two perspectives. And my my role on the council is portfolio holder for regeneration planning and transport. And then within transport, you've got highways and then you've got drainage and flood risk, et cetera. So from a technical kind of engineering perspective, that's where a lot of our officers have come from in support of Ilkley Clean River Group, looking at that sort of element, the wider impacts. We're doing natural flood management work on Backstone Beck, for instance. So how we can reduce flood risk along the whole catchment and improve that water quality. And a lot of it was based around that. And where the water safety strategy, I think, comes in slightly in some of the sort of wider management issues around how we cope with the influx of visitors into Ilkley, gets picked up by various different departments within the Bradford Council, some of which come under me, like Parking Services Strategically, and a lot come under, say, the Park Service Wardens and so on and so forth. And that's where Jonathan comes in, and he's our lead contact with Ilkley Clean River Group now as well, just to try to simplify that and have that single point of contact. So I'll bring in Jonathan a bit there on on the housing growth. I think I did send in to the Ilkley Clean River Group a bit of feedback from our planning officer. So I was just desperately trying to pull it up there. And alas, I can't find it before I've had to speak, so never mind for that. But the housing allocation has dropped quite significantly for Ilkley since the core strategy in twenty seventeen. So it's been a bit of a history with trying to get a local planning, we're consulting on it now. Appreciate anyone's feedback if you visit the Bradford Council website. But in twenty seventeen, we adopted a core strategy, which is kind of like a planning framework as part of the local plan. And that had housing numbers, obviously, twenty seventeen, it can like a different world in many respects, and not just because of a kind of pre pandemic world. But the district wide housing need then was calculated at forty two thousand. And I think I've noticed in a bit of that thousand figure, I think is probably based on that twenty seventeen document. The latest one, the local plan, based on kind of obviously updated policy documents, all the different things that's happened since twenty seventeen, and a lot of that evidence was pre Brexit as well. The allocation in the plan for Ilkley is around three hundred, so a lot lower for this area. But not to say that that doesn't bring its own challenges and completely understand them. And officers are keen to hear people saying that. In terms of how that will affect water quality, obviously, there's a well established process through the planning system for making sure that houses are planned, that they work with utility companies. Obviously, Yorkshire Water have been speaking as well on this. So when we set out through the local plan, there's an infrastructure plan that goes with it. So the document's there as well. And that sets out how we engage with utility companies, for instance, so that they can plan their investments in line with the anticipated growth as it goes through that process. As housing goes in there, far we'd work with Yorkshire Water. And there's a general principle, obviously, we'd we'd never expect or or sort of allow to see a worsening of the water quality through housing growth. And that should be therefore dealt with through the planning process, in essence. So partly sometimes through through developments as well, you can try and prove, particularly maybe say flood risk on a site or what through water attenuation and all that kind of thing. And our Homes and Neighborhoods Design Guide, which we produced last year, maybe even the year before now, because time's knocking on, which is, can't quite believe we've been in this situation for a year. But we produced that wide ranging consultation, big bigger emphasis on green streets and kind of sustainability and and trying to make sure that therefore that new developments achieve much higher standards than they have done in the past. And that got nominated for an award for its sort of for the for the documents we're really pleased about. And the core strategy has a much bigger emphasis, the new local plan has a much bigger emphasis on net zero and how we move towards that. So in terms of what development should come, appreciate not everyone wants development, but what should come should be much better quality. And then there's a strong planning process for how we kind of integrate that into existing sewer systems and everything else. And we'll work closely with Yorkshire Water on that. On the water safety strategy, I think it's underway, is my understanding. And work is is ongoing as part of that. I think it might be getting picked up with the partnership group that has been announced. But Jonathan, do you want to come in and just talk us through where we are on that? And perhaps any time scales we have, or particular, I suppose people be interested if there's any point for public engagement, although with it being a general safety strategy, I don't know how much that would be normally the case anyway for those sorts of documents. But Jonathan, is there anything I've missed there that you think you can add to on the water safety strategy?
No, I don't think so, councillor. We're developing it at the moment. We're looking at the the strategies that are in place across West Yorkshire and taking the best that we can from those. We've got a meeting at the end of the month where we hope to to finalise that. It will have to go to the council executive for for sign off. But in the meantime, as part of that strategy, we will be carrying out risk assessments at a number of sites where where we feel there are high risk sites across the district. And we'll be working with a consultancy who have a lot of experience in in terms of risk assessment around water safety. To do that, Ilkley Riverside will be one of those sites. And we are expecting that that will recommend things around signage and improved signage. We're also expecting that because of the people jumping off the footbridge into the into the river, that that will also feature, and there'll be some recommendations about what we need to do there. And and obviously, we'll, you know, we'll be guided by that risk assessment and the sort of mitigating factors that it that it recommends.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. And I guess, if did you say that's going to come to the executive as well?
The policy will, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So just for for everyone else, if it had come to the council's executive committee, it may in the paper would be published in public. It'd go online a week before the meeting, and then the meeting's held in public. So people would have the opportunity to come and ask questions as well. So there'll be there'll be a bit of a process to follow, and then a decision will be made in public as well. So look forward to seeing that, Jonathan.
Thanks very much. Thank you both, thanks so much. I know this is not really a meeting about the riverside, but it was just, I just, I'm going to move us on, Jonathan, because we've got. We'll have room in the breakouts for that. I'm just very wary of time now as we move on. So Mark.
Becky, sorry.
Yeah.
I would just like to have asked Robbie where he got the figures from, because I think the figures Robbie gave were more current than twenty seventeen.
Yeah, I can clarify that the draft local plan proposes up to a hundred and eighty one could be developed in Addingham, three hundred and fourteen in Ilkley and six hundred and ten in Burley. And that is what's being, so that adds up to one thousand one hundred and five houses in those three settlements, most of which are on Greenbelt. Thanks.
Thank you.
And my point was, really, sorry, just just to close this one, Becky, because the housing planning process, we've got evidence of the fact that the it's not as robust as perhaps it's been suggested that it is. So the particular point behind this is we would like to see some evidence of those integrated activities between those organisations, because we do fear that it is going to get worse before it gets better. Thank you.
Okay, so we can pick that up if you want to join the Bradford Council group, you're welcome to do that. And just, Mark, just wanted, if you're here, just give the, I'll give our mayor a chance to respond to everything we've talked about so far.
Okay, well, I've just I've just got a few points. I mean, I think firstly, the most important thing is to say congratulations to the group and thank you very much. It is very much a locally led response. And it's important to remember for everybody that it's not just an academic issue. It's not just about the generality of national water quality. This is about our river in Ilkley being pleasant, safe and sustainably managed for the future for local residents and visitors. I'm delighted that so much progress has already been made, and that's greatly a result of the pressure that's been exerted. And it's also, I think, because it's become a politically attractive subject now, because so many people clearly care about it in Ilkley. I think listening to the discussion so far, it's clear that there's an issue that of cohesion. There are lots of strands now that are potentially going to happen at the same time. I think it's very important that those are held together and we retain cohesion. And I also think that it's important that we retain communication. I think a lot of the problems, a lot of the lack of trust, the lack of confidence results just from a lack of communication. We don't know what's happening, and therefore people don't believe anything is happening, and they don't feel that they can trust the people that are delivering it. I think we need to see clear planning about the speed and the clarity of the direction we're we're travelling in, particularly on water quality. And finally, and I think this is this is a very much a concern for local people, is the issue about the branding and the management of the bathing status. This is this relates to how a park is managed, how the river is managed. And it's very important that this becomes a positive and positively influencing feature of the river and not something that becomes a negative feature for the river. We want to see the river promoted as still a safe and pleasant place to visit. But in order to do that, we need clear clarity from Yorkshire Water, the Environment Agency, Bradford, and everybody in place by May. So this does need some urgent action in terms of that, I personally feel. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, that's really helpful. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the breakouts. Robbie will be whisked off to the MP room, and Alex will be whisked off to the Bradford Council room. And Richard will head off to Yorkshire Water, Martin to the EA. And some of the members of the public are going to join you there. So I'm going to open those rooms. If you haven't chosen a room, just start posting in the chat, and I'll just keep adding you in as those rooms open. We've got ten minutes in those breakouts, so you've got a chance to ask folks questions. We'll come back, finish off with our plan for the whole river, and we'll move into our closed group at the end of that. So thanks, everybody, so far for contributions. See you in the breakouts, and then we'll come back together for the final close with the I Worf project. Here we go. And then anyone who's still around as you go off to your rooms, Martin Nash, you want to go to two? So let's see if I can find you, assigned to two, there we go. Anybody else, just let me know where you want to be. So John, you want to go to two? Let me just find you, we're assigned to two. Okay, Caroline, you want to go to one? That's great. Who else we've got, Martin to two? I think you've gone, should have done. Who's left? Who have we got left? Just unmute yourselves as we go through, and I'll let me just shout you out. Tom, where'd you like to go?
I'll go to BMDC, please.
There you go. Laura, where would you like to go? Where do you want to go, Laura?
Sorry, same, please.
Bradford, off you go. Helen, where would you like to go?
Hi, two, please.
You're off to off to. Sorry, love, just take your little sign to do, obviously Robbie, Chris, do you want to go anywhere, Chris Forshaw? Julia Bryson, do you want to go anywhere? Probably not BBC. Danny, do you want to go anywhere?
BMDC, please.
Right, well, there you go. Mo, Nick and Mo, do you want to go anywhere? Lucy Fox? Claire? And Ian? Okay, I'm assuming they're all happy where you are.
Is now aware of that, albeit only recently. But what I think we need to do is to get all in one room and kind of agree what all this looks like. So I'll leave that with me, Rick, I'll sort it. And it'll probably be the, obviously, my technical colleagues who are the best ones to liaise with you on that rather than myself. But it would seem sensible to do the DNA stuff testing, which particularly useful, I'd say.
That's good.
Yeah, so leave that with me.
Great.
Mark, my great folks who are here, do do unmute yourselves and ask any questions you've got.
I think we're not all necessarily in the place that we expected to be, Becky. So I I think colleagues were expecting to be with the Environment Agency rather than me.
Who wants to move? I can move you.
Mark Wilkins, I'd like to ask a question, a Yorkshire Water question. Hi.
Can you put me the A man? Sorry, sorry, Mark, sorry. Go ahead.
I wondered, I think Robbie said that the water companies had committed to 1.2 billion to address the issue of CSO discharge. And I wondered which asset management period that was going to be in.
That's a good question. I think that figure, I'd have to get, I assume he got that figure from Water UK, because he didn't get it from from.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, I would think that relates to the current asset management period.
So that's over the next five years.
Yeah, because no one will have put their business plans together for the following five years as yet. You obviously know how this kind of stuff works. And so I would guess it's over this five years, but I'd need to check that.
Okay, thanks very much. Yep. I've got other questions, but let everybody else have a chance first.
Looks like it's you, Mark, go ahead.
So you're on mute, Mark, I think.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Back to the question of development and new houses. And I wondered what were the plans for upgrading the infrastructure? Because the developers will be paying money for connections and money for sewer reinforcement and possibly new sewage pumping stations. But there won't, but there won't be any charges for improving the, the treatment works, for instance. Because that's not in the legislation. So what is going to happen?
No, I mean, you've picked on a really key issue, I think, there, Mark. So we are not a statutory consultee on, on housing developments. And as it stands, developers have got a statutory right to connect to the public sewer. We would like that to change. Now, you need to look at this at two levels. One, in terms of the foul water connections, that's not particularly an issue. And I don't think the, the increase in, in flows will cause a major problem. The issue is about the surface water drainage here.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the biggest problem here. And we would like it to be a mandatory piece of planning guidance that all developers and housing developments have to incorporate sustainable drainage systems within their projects that do not add flows to the public sewage system, because that would have a substantial impact.
Because that's going to lead to CSO over lots of CSO discharges, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've pressured for that to be, the other company's also pressured for that to be in the environment bill, but it didn't get in.
Okay, so and what is like, because you're then going to have a licence, I think, from the discharge from the pumping station into the, into the wharf essentially. And I wonder what that licence is going to say.
I mean, clearly I don't know that the answer, the specific answer to that, but these things do cause a problem. So I mean, I, I know it's not Ilkley, but I've been dealing with a couple of issues in other parts of Yorkshire where you've got a legacy pump that was put in by the developer, paid for for a period. The developer in question was Carillion, which obviously went past. And suddenly you've got this asset there that fails, isn't properly maintained. And someone's going to adopt it and ultimately it'll be ourselves and the local authority.
But yes, thanks, Richard. I'm guessing though that you would adopt, adopt the sewage pumping station.
Oh, you know, in a position where you have no choice ultimately, because otherwise people flood and you can stop that. But the ideal thing would be, I mean, we'll need to put pressure on Bradford to adopt really high standards of sustainable drainage on the site, such that you don't get flows coming into the, into the public sewage system. Whether that's through soakaways, sods or whatever.
But back to the question of that, I think Alex said, which is they want standards for new developments, which actually improve everything.
Yes, that's not, it's not a very joined up system currently at all.
Ah, yeah, I did wonder. Okay, thank you. So you think that the CSO licence is likely to follow, follow current trends, i.e. to be in extreme weather events, not in just when there's a bit of rain.
I would imagine so, yes. I can see a process by which the permit conditions will end up being tightened over the next few years. A lot of them haven't been reviewed for quite a long time.
But this been a new when you, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
That's all right.
I don't think I've got any other questions.
Margaret, Jenny, Isla, do you have any? Go, Margaret.
There was one question, you were referring to Backstone Beck and the use of diverting of it for diverting waters into it. There was a lot of problems with Backstone Beck not a long time ago. Flooding.
Okay.
And I just wondered about the wisdom. I mean, I, I'm not an engineer. I don't really know how all this works particularly. But I know if you're putting a lot more water into a bed that used to overflow occasionally, more than occasionally, it did get a bit blocked at one point. You know, how do you prevent that flooding again? Because there's property all around Bratstone Beck, of course.
Yeah, it flows through quite an area of housing, doesn't it? Simple answer is I'm not an engineer either. I don't know the flooding history in that area. But I will feed that back to the joint team of ourselves, Bradford and the EA who are looking at that solution. I know that they are doing sort of network modelling and will have an idea of what the flows are. It's quite, it's a significant flow. I did see the figure the other day, but I, I I think, no, I won't try and grab a figure out of the air because I'll probably get it wrong.
We are about to close the breakout. So any final questions, anybody?
Yeah, just about. Oh, is it too late?
Quick, quick, quick.
Um, in terms of being notified when there is overflow going on, particularly at that area where the Ashlands plant is. How sort of soon are Yorkshire Water's plans to make that data publicly available, like sort of real time when overflows are taking place?
Well, I think we'll probably in, in the first instance, need to rely on mechanical systems rather than just real time data. So we'll need to work with the council to publicise that through signage, media and so on in the, in a, in an old fashioned way. Because we haven't got the mechanism to, to, it's called an API, I think, to allow real time access to that data. But I think we need to get into that position quickly. We already do it on the coast. So surface against sewage, we provide with reasonably regular real time data that they go into, that goes into.
Hi all. It's, it's sort of incredibly rude, isn't it? You sort of get going and then suddenly just moved. Richard, whilst, whilst we were in the breakouts, I did just show you, just send you the map of Yorkshire Water land. So that's the map that we were sent from Yorkshire Water about which bits you own, just so that you knows, but you've got it on your email now. Let's just finish off. I know you've had a chance to have some conversations. If people want more conversations, do, do let us know and we can connect you up with anybody that you were talking to during the course of that breakout. I hope they were helpful. I know there are lots of issues for everybody to, to, to work on. Rick, we've just got literally three minutes, Rick. If you think you can do Iworf in three minutes, which I know is a challenge. But here we go. Let's just finish off with the positive collaborative project that we're involved in, all of us together. And you'll need to unmute yourself, Rick.
Just, just time me out like, like the breakout group there and just disappeared. Yes. So this is just slightly wider context. If you want to move on to the next one, Becky. So we started, Ilkley's in the middle there. We, we started that work a couple of years ago, looking at fecal bacteria just around the Ashlands sewage works in Ilkley. And we realised very quickly that because of the final effluent bacterial concentration, then high concentrations of fecal bacteria should be experienced all the way down Ilkley, right the way down to the confluence. But we also noticed that often the concentrations coming Ilkley, Ilkley to Ilkley were really quite low. So we had this idea that upstream of Ilkley, we would have low concentrations and downstream we would have high concentrations. So we put together this idea of getting samples all the way along from source, from upper Wharfdale, right the way down to, to York almost. About, and to sample the river at 60 sites all on the same day. So we, we don't have too much variation too much, too much confounding variation from, from flow. And of those 60 sites, we chose 32 sites, which we thought were popular bathing beaches. And we measured E. coli and intestinal enterococci. And so these, you can see the results, the green line there is that thousand coliform forming units per hundred mil, which we might sort of argue as being relatively safe for swimming. And whilst we do have high values down from Ilkley, see that, see the very high value there at Ilkley at Bielans. In fact, we found a little bit surprisingly that we also have pretty high values up in Upper Wharfdale. And then the decline in the Bolton Abbey area, which we think represents die off. But it's quite clear, if you go to the next one Becky as well, which is intestinal, if next one Becky.
One sec.
So sorry, yeah. The next one's, it looks the same, but it's, it's even perhaps more over that safe threshold for intestinal enterococci. But it still shows the same pattern of high values in Upper Wharfdale. So we think there are issues in Upper Wharfdale in the sort of Grassington, Burnstall area there too. And then the reason why we have a, a, a low values between Upper Wharfdale and Ilkley is because there's a long stretch there through Bolton Abbey and Stridwood, where there's no real major input and, and there's a chance then for the bacterial dial. So that's where we are. We're intending with, to follow that up. So that next, next summer, this coming summer, we'll repeat it, but we'll repeat it in different flow conditions. When we did Iworf last year, there was quite high flows. We want to find a, a, a time in this coming summer with low flows. And that should accentuate the pollution because there'll be less water in the river to dilute the, the pollution coming in. So we're looking for funding for that, but, but that's almost certainly going to go ahead sometime in the summer. But in the intermediate time, we've got some funding already through the Yorkshire Dales National Park and the Swindon Quarry Fund to look in more detail at those pollution sites in Upper Wharfdale. And we're going to look at about 30 sites from Hubberhome down to, down to Bolton Abbey. On three occasions, hopefully at high flow, medium flow and low flow, to see if we can get some more detail on the sources of those fairly high concentrations coming into these sites further up the river. So this comes back to the point, I think both Robbie and Richard are making. Just saying that this fits in with this idea of the whole of the River Wharf being a kind of exemplar site for improving water quality.
Thanks.
Richard, Richard and Robbie were mentioning.
So and finally, just to say, we have a new website we're launching today, ilkleyclearyriver.uk where you can find all the latest, including our seminars for people that want to learn how to get bathing status, the citizen science test. So I think what I, I think as we finish, just to say that what we've tried to do is to run a, a great local campaign, but to make this as available to anybody else across the UK that wants to. And there are times at which we are challenging as the public to our agencies and there are times when we work in partnership. But it's nice to be moving into a space where we're now all walking towards exactly the same thing. It's been an absolute delight to hear that tonight. We're really pleased with the progress that we're seeing. We're looking forward to, I know Richard says, maybe we'll get a town meeting where we're all together. Let's hope so. I guess it's going to be under a very large gazebo in the park possibly in the summer. But we look forward to seeing you both at the, as we have our national visitors start coming in to visit us from the government and from the agencies to celebrate the achievements here in Ilkley. But also to collaborate on our future plans. Thank you to absolutely everybody that's come today. Thank you to Mark Sibworthy, our, our town mayor. Thank you to Robbie, our MP. Thank you to Alex and Jonathan and Sue, lovely Sue from Bradford Council. Thank you to Richard and Dan from Yorkshire Water to Martin and colleagues from the Environment Agency. We really appreciate your time. It's a ghastly time of day after a day of Zooms for everyone. Thank you to everybody from Ilkley who both supports the campaign and wants to collaborate. If anybody wants to unmute, cheer, say anything or whatever they like before we go. We are staying on for the Ilkley Clean River Group and your general meeting. Anybody from Ilkley is welcome to stay for that. I sent you the papers. If you're at all interested, we would be delighted to have more people help. So those that want to leave are welcome to leave. Cheer, unmute, say goodbye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Stay in the cause. I can't believe we've got 50 people here.
Thanks everyone.